So which one are we doing first?
We're actually doing the budget item.
Oh, okay.
A mandate from state.
Oh, just one of those, right?
Yeah.
This would be in five to twenty. So it's multi-color.
Okay.
So don't keep looking?
Yeah, don't, don't, don't keep looking. I'm gonna give you the. What it looks like with the expenditures. So. Starting in. Two thousand seven. There was a scandal in Vegas. Where judges were appointing people to represent clients and defendants. Based upon who gave them campaign contributions. It was a big scandal. So the Supreme Court initiated the ABK four, ADK T four eleven commission. And they appointed a bunch of public defenders from Vegas. And. Couple from Reno and started having hearings on. Then they came out with recommendations for all the defense counsel across the state that had nothing to do with. The initial scandal. Pershing County, at that time, we were the first ones to object to their recommendations. The recommendations were gonna mandate that. All our defense counsel do certain things. And it would have cost the county a lot of money. So we objected, Supreme Court held that hearing, there was, after we objected, there were objections from all across the state. But the Supreme Court held a hearing and they, they backtracked and made the. The standards that they had enacted discretionary not mandatory. But we went on with the hearings, because they still hadn't addressed the original issue. So now we're. Right, basically, wait till now. They created it in the last legislative session, an entity called the Department of Indigent Defense Services. And they came out with regulations this year. Those regulations require that the counties do certain things, create a plan. Mr. Shields is looking at the draft that we've been working on. But one of their. Their. Biggest. Moves is make sure the judges can't do anything. As far as appointment of counsel, approval expenses, those type of things. But they never came out here and studied how our system worked. They didn't go to Mineral County, didn't go to Lander County, as far as I know, they didn't really come up to the rural counties. And figure out what our problems actually were. They didn't understand how we have. Here we have an institutional public defender, then you have Mr. Swanson as the conflict public defender. And because the county has set it up that way, that was the first two that got appointed. She would not, Judge Stevens did most of the appointments, she wouldn't have discretion. To appoint a crony. When you should get to the third tier, which I think Mr. Shields and I were talking about it, Mr. Cochran, I think there've been maybe three cases, two cases last year. Before we get to the third conflict, get from Mr. Cochran, through Mr. Swanson. And then on, so it's not a very frequent thing. But even then, we have a list, and unlike other places, you have an ordinance. That establishes she has to rotate through that list, like. Not. Pointing same person over and over again. So, in reality, it's not a problem, but. They are required to take the judges out of the screening process and the determination who's gonna be appointed process. Take the judges out of deciding if the fees for an expert witness or for a. Investigator are appropriate. And whether the attorney suit are appropriate, so we're proposing some changes so that you can. Accomplish this. So in Mr. Cochran's budget, when you talk, he's gonna have a line item in there. For, he already has one, but he's gonna have to increase that sum. Or expert witnesses and. Investigative fees. The good thing about, or any increases we talk about. The state has to shift a corresponding amount to the county to pay for those increases. Because we're trying to comply with what they wanted, and the regulations say the state will pay for it. So if his goes up like, I think it's twelve thousand, what we're talking about for your actions. An investigative fee, right? I think. I think you said you had eight, and it goes up to twenty, but, so that increase there, the state's gonna have to pay for that. So when we met as the four of us on how to design your plan, you've got to approve it ultimately. But the plan has to have some aspect of. Appointing counsel outside of the purview of the judge, or determining who's gonna be appointed. And doing the same thing with fees and, and, and attorney fees. So what we came up with an idea is, because you might have two appointments on weekends. We came up with the idea of having people on call. That are maybe like paralegals or have some knowledge about the legal system. And they would, would screen the defendant within forty-eight hours, and they would. Make a recommendation for the appointment of the attorney within forty-eight hours. And then Judge Stevens would appoint from that recommendation, or determine. For example, if it was a murder case and they didn't believe that. The judge doesn't believe that the attorney is capable of doing a murder case. She could reject that and send it back to the. To the council administrator for an appointment of appropriate person. So we, we thought about that, we have, we have these basically contract people, or they could be. Part-time employees or something like that, that would be out there to do that on a, on a rotation basis. We determined three, because eventually somebody's gonna be sick or on vacation, so they're gonna need coverage, they can't do it. That week, so we, we budgeted a cost for the council administrator positions. You'll, you'll see it on the budget there, it's the first thing and highlighted in green. There's gonna be costs with administering those people, so we budgeted money in for that. We budgeted, budgeted money for travel and training. We budgeted money for supplies such as paper and toner. We budgeted so that we make sure they have viable internet. And actually, that number's a little low, I'll have to adjust that. It should be thirty-six hundred. And then, we budgeted for an expert investigative cost. Or court-appointed counsel. All those fees would be covered by the state, in theory.
In theory.
In theory.
Well, but we wouldn't spend it. The way we drafted the plan is the alternative, if they don't fund us. Then all these things that we're talking about that are. I think they say are upgrades, all those things go away, we go back to the statutory way of doing them. We also, in the outlay, we also put in for some computers, the second sheet kind of details where we came up with the numbers. But if it doesn't get approved, we will not spend any of the money, and there won't be revenue to cover it.
Or are we gonna pay on this contract?
I, I'm thinking contract people. Well, that, it all, some of it depends. If we could combine the three counties. Do something that might change how we're doing it exactly, but. Your expense wouldn't, it's not even your expense, the expense that we're looking at for this county wouldn't exceed that.
So is this paid by reimbursement, or can we get the money upfront? Or do you know?
I don't know, it just says. So they should have the money in their budget, they should be just paid upfront, so you're not, we shouldn't have to be waiting if. If, 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 for example. None, well, if Mr. Cochran comes in and says, I need an expert witness. Sign sensitive, we shouldn't be waiting for the money to come back and forth, it should be, be there, should be access it, if it doesn't. At the end of the, the year, Reno, the true, and state back there, man.
But a lot of state agencies want you to submit invoice so they can reimburse. Well, we'll see.
And part of the cost of administration. It makes new account the invoice process.
Oh.
Well, at least for the attorney fees for the panel attorneys. We have vouchers through. And if there's expert, we have the voucher through.
And would that cover some of Rain's costs too? In her office?
We, we will provide some of the money to Rain's office, but in truth, it doesn't increase her. In theory, it shouldn't increase her costs at all, because we're already doing that. But it, it's only fair that. If they're gonna add layers of your offering suit to us, that we have. Plans that if she has to pull up more paperwork because of them.
We do get ten thousand dollars per PC adding the cost, but it's in department ten, so it's a forty, forty, twenty split.
But this would come from the, from the stateman.
Well, in twelve years of being on board of trustees. I see a lot of them funded mandates, so.
Well, but the regs, the regs that were trying to do the planning of. Specifically have a provision in there that the state's gonna fund any added costs from their regs. So if. And that's been adopted and proved, and so if, if, if they're not gonna do it. You shouldn't have to spend more money, let me just give you a great reason why, just from Pershing County's perspective. You already have a better system, and you'd spend more money than a lot of the surrounding counties. Because you've got an institutional defender, so for Mr. Cochran, and he works great. Criticized, and you pay for his staff, for the purse, for their office. You pay for everything, the kind, the, the attorneys out in the community, the private attorneys, you just pay. Hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever, and I think when Bryce and I were looking at the numbers a couple of years ago. When they were requesting, and your numbers were higher than the others. And in a, in a way. In a way, it's fair to you, because what, what they're willing to reimburse you for is more than what your average was of the previous two. Cat fiscal years, but if you were already spending more. Then all of a sudden, you're gonna have to spend even more.
Yeah, because we have this, if we didn't have a salary of public defender in that system, yeah.
And actually, the reason Mr. Cochran shares, because back when you can wait.
Seven as the humble Persian deputy.
So when we went, when we went to the institutional public defenders and went away from state public defender's office. They. We did that, we could state public defender office, it's so expensive, and we saved money when we did it. So.
And the state wasn't doing a good job, anyway, in representing the clients.
There's that, but there, if you just look at time. Most that were here was two to three days per month. He's here five days, I mean, per week, he's here five days per week. So, bang for the buck, you get, bang for the buck from Mr. Cochran in his office, so. Not denying I said that. Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to get him out. I, I think you ought to set up a separate line. So we show where the, the money was requested. And, and back to the original question about, it's not fair for these small counties to have to float. The state.
Yeah.
It's not, it's totally unfair. If, you know, if they have a immediate process that she can bill them and get the money back. That would be fine, but. Not like you guys have a lot of money to flow. Any questions about it all?
No, we were kind of pre-warned about this.
That's good, that's all right.
Not about your, your funds, but the, what we have to do.
Well, and we. We started coming, talking to you. For a long time about what they were trying to do with.
Yeah, why didn't they just fix Clark County?
Interesting thing is they're not doing anything with Clark. The regulations only apply to the boroughs.
Yeah, they did.
Why is that?
Yeah.
Because Washoe and Clark are, they're only two counties in the state.
They, they have the political plot to.
Yeah.
End it off, so.
Well, my concern. If, it's great if the state pays for this, but the state. Pretty much all of eighty-five percent of the state's revenue comes from six city blocks in Los Vegas.
Yeah. But if they, if they're not gonna pay for it, we're not gonna do it. Well, it's up to you guys whether you do it or not, but.
Yeah. But you're right.
There's no funds.
I would, I would not be asking you to do it. Let's put it that way, you guys could decide to do it, but I wouldn't ask. But we won't spend it if the money's not there. The next thing that, in that plan that we've gotta address that we haven't. Is it's all your call. So they're willing to have the state public defender come in and do a death case if you have. It doesn't cost anything extra. Supposed to come out of their budget. You three need to decide if that's. The risk you wanna take of doing it on your own, or if you wanna have the state provide the state public defender's office to do that kind of case.
And just that portion, just the. And then do we pay them something for it ahead, it's only when we actually have a case and.
You don't, you don't pay them a dime.
Oh, okay, good.
They have to cover the case. The way I understand it, and the way the regs read.
So do we just need to provide them notification of that?
That's where you're, you're gonna exercise the option to allow them to do death cases, you could do it within the plan.
Is there a deadline for that?
The, the plan's deadline, I think they sent out September third, but we're trying to get it done early. If we have to go through the budget, we might have more money in here in July.
So we could put it on our next agenda, couldn't we?
You can put the plan on your next, we can prove it.
Okay.
I think, Commissioner Shanks, you received an email from Marcy Wyder.
I don't know, is it recent?
We talked about it.
Oh. Okay, I've been on other things.
My concern with having drafted everything up, that they, they do it how they want it, then, not how it fits the uniqueness of Pershing County.
Oh, that's that email, sorry, okay, I'm with you. Yeah, no, I think that's great, I don't want their. We know what, you guys know what you're doing.
Yeah.
You do.
I think these three do.
Yeah, sure. All of you do. Okay, good.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him for a decision.
Yeah, we couldn't tell you officially anyway.
I would just inform you that's.
Are we gonna have one of the, we're not, that's death penalty, right? Not a, oh, okay. There's not too many death penalty cases.
There are pretty special circumstances when the state can seek those. You know, if I were saying anything very clear, I think the system is working very well. Yeah, Stevens was doing her job, the attorneys were doing their jobs. There, there are some things that they are making better, and one of them is legal training for the public defenders. Because the DA's association has the, the DA's association prosecutor advisory council that help with training. But the defense lawyer didn't have. If he'd been in Clark, Washoe. Their, their public defender job, they're big enough that they put on their own trainings. But. I think the rural, rural public defenders were left with. Whatever they could learn from other trainings. That aren't necessarily geared up for criminal cases. Okay, any more questions? You guys get it on the hot seat.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
What's your first nomination? One fifty-five, it's a multi-color.
Just real quick, on the other meetings I'm having with the other sets of county commissioners, we're actually. Commissioner Hudson, I know you have been through the process, so I'm just explaining for that. At the end of the year, when you do your audit, Rain also does what we call a true-up. Where she sees how much money move back she spent. And then takes whatever we didn't spend, of course, she did it according to the forty, forty, twenty, or. Whatever the split may be. And then she makes sure that there is a true-up of reimbursement of the monies we didn't use. So, and the other county commissioners, I represent them with a check. During the budget hearing, so they know how much money they get back. I believe yours was like one hundred seventy-one thousand.
Yeah.
I think it was right around there. We can get, you, you don't get a check, it's already in your, your files. So you, you've got money back from last, last budget, budget session, so just signal that. So if we, I guess the first one in, in there is Department ten. As far as your expenditures. The increases are in. Well, actually, this is the revenue sheet.
Yeah, a couple sheets.
Well, if you wanna talk about revenues, we can, but.
So you do ten first?
Yeah, Department ten. If you were to look at it, the places where there were increases were salaries. And. And then the other increase was in. Maintenance and vehicle expense about halfway down in the services and supplies. There were increases on maintenance, because that's our computer costs. The Supreme Court mandated that we start storing our data on local server. Which requires that we get a license for the software that stores it. And then. We increased the vehicle expenses slightly, two hundred and fifty dollars at some point this year. Our vehicle need new tires. Can we move the. The fuel expense over Department thirty, right? Yeah, that was, that was actually for all three counties.
So did you add some positions?
No. I, no, I don't think we added anything that subtracted couple.
The high school interns, have you had those people?
I took those out.
Oh, you did?
If we could do them for free, we'll do them. I think they have a community service requirement, so if they do, we'll, we'll take them.
Okay. So you don't have that in then this time?
No. No, that doesn't need to be in the high school interns. And then the, the two master positions for Pershing, I'm not, I'm not hiring anybody in those.
Okay, so we need to take that one, eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars out.
Yeah.
And then the twenty-six thousand, three ninety-five?
Yeah, for the, well, mineral, the.
Just the Persian County?
Well, both, both mineral and Pershing, land or pace.
Okay.
They're paying for judge bunch, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, we, we have it zeroed out. I'm not, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think, I think the sheets that we submitted, what they were zeroed out, but. And I missed that, I'm sorry. But that would actually drop it by about forty thousand dollars. Which I, when I was looking at total, I was like, wait, that doesn't quite add up what I have.
What percentage increase did you give your staff?
It was basically three point five.
Three point five.
Which I think is what you're generally gonna have between their step and their. And we did that across the board, so Mr. Baldini's, I know that law enforcement has different numbers, but Mr. Baldini's staff get the same thing, three point five. And then Kate wasn't here at the last, Kate is the new court administrator and court clerk. We have questions for her, for free. She likes to answer questions.
Put you on the spot. Do we have a vacancy in the, the clerk, the court clerk's office?
Have a what?
Do we have a vacancy in the court clerk's office?
We do right now.
So, I forgot.
Candace is working the pre-trial risk assessment.
Okay, so she, okay, but she didn't leave you, she just moved.
No, she was, we just, she had a lateral switch.
So are we gonna fill that position?
We're, we're advertising.
Yeah, he's, he's got it as a branch.
I think I saw that on the website.
Pardon me?
I saw that on the website.
Yeah.
You had a correction, Lacy?
On, on the second salary sheet?
Yeah. Yep.
I think her salary in the total column is not capitally affected.
Actually, it is. The, the one on the total present salary is not capitally correct, because she's paid out of two different budgets.
Oh.
So.
And that might be why there's a decrease on salaries. Technically, we should have a proposed salary for her portion here and the other portion in direct work. I'm gonna have to ask Chris, cause she's got the present salary higher than the proposed.
We're gonna go down to twenty-seven?
I think we paid this Baldini guy too much, but.
Probably almost to purr. He's been asking me to double his salary, so. I think most of the expenses with exceptions employees increased remain about the same.
And this is also paid
Yeah, mineral, mineral, land or in Pershing, so. Any questions about, do you know? We're still paying out of the detention fees or that's that third one from the bottom. We're still paying for winter, coming here. So, what, what, what in Rick is it for kids that have substance abuse, abictions? And they go there to really pre-successful program. But it doesn't cost us three hundred dollars a day for a kid being detention.
Dan, the case, the caseload for probation and juvenile, is it staying about the same, or has it increased? I'm just curious.
I think there was a low limit when COVID first came about, but it's significantly on a steady increase now. It's pretty consistent in Persian County. It's really consistent in Mineral County, Lander County may be a little bit, little bit slower with referrals. But it's, it's, it's on a pretty consistent pattern. A lot more interaction with truance in schools here. I think that, that issue of distance learning is impacting the truance, those kids that do distance learn. They don't log in and check in with their teachers that are given on truance. And it seems to be a problem that we're having in, in both land or in Persian at this time, with our referrals for truance in school. But it's been pretty consistent. Our guarding that light appropriate, the same, it maybe has gone down, but it's consistent and and I think the judge for that, he, he, he keeps us involved with the families on a consistent basis, but when it's time for us to leave, he'll take us off and, and send us to the next. But I guess the short answer is we're on a consistent, maybe a steady increase now that everybody's kind of coming back. There are other factors. For example, when we, when we first had a school resource officer here, the numbers jumped.
Yes.
And they put a school resource officer down in Mineral, the numbers jumped. And I think Lander just got authorization for school resource officers, so their numbers will probably jump somewhat too. A lot of it has to do with how law enforcement is interacting with the juveniles. And these guys don't get much decision there, it's just who comes through and what's.
Yeah, and that's still working well, the youth resource officer.
Oh, yeah.
Pershing County.
I think it totally benefits the schools.
We haven't had that much distance learning since the school years. They're all in person unless the high school isn't doing that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's why it's with the, with the youth resource officer over there, Persian has had him for a while. And Manero came on late, now Lander's coming in later. Lander County's just started going back at full-time school.
Okay.
February fifteenth. They just returned all the students, but they still have an option in Lander County.
So do you see the same kids over and over again?
There's probably.
What I was hoping was they.
He's, he's now seeing the children or the grandchildren of children.
Yeah. Sad.
I think our biggest, and not, not to keep going on, but I, we've got a lot more referrals out of the Grass Valley area in the last couple of months. The referrals out there, I think the sheriff would attest to that, they've, they've really significantly went up. And they're, they're more domestic violence issues, battery issues and things of a higher nature from truance. But the Grass Valley, I think we got, I'm, I'm pulling up after maybe five or six kids over there.
Oh, County also went back to in-person learning. Just started this week, and they will be studying.
I think they just went back to school too, yeah.
So that could be an issue with it too, they weren't in schools.
It's a whole different world, that's all I can say.
Yes. Yeah.
Anyway, you guys are doing a great job, I know that, so thank you very much. Yeah. Okay.
Orlando twenty-nine?
And also that doesn't count numbers that add in.
Wait, big jump in witness and jury fees? Or is it a decrease?
Jump?
Well, yeah, in twenty-two, nineteen, twenty, twenty jumped all the way up to twenty-four, almost. But then we had COVID, and that's why the number was just a little.
Oh, yeah.
And part of the issue too was we started having the justice, the peace started having jury trials of whether that comes out of this.
Yeah.
So there's, that's why in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty, there was that jump. They had two or three, so.
That's another unfunded mandate.
Changing laws, right?
Yeah.
And it's not a change in legislation, it's changing what the Supreme Court interpreted. I will say if you look at the attorney fees, we have decreased that from the seventy-five in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The budget that we have, because we were anticipating a lot more, but it didn't happen, so.
Oh, one two. We don't buy, sheriff doesn't think that, but we don't. So Candace does pre-trial release?
Yeah.
So what is, what does she do, Candace? I mean, this kind of.
She, it's an application from each county, every county goes to the rest, and then when there is, she does the risk assessment. And it's either the defendant participates in it, or they don't, but either way, she does a risk assessment for everybody that's arrested. Um, contempt of court or something like that. And she admits that to Judge Stevens and Judge in Mineral County. It, it basically helps them assess the risk of leaving.
Okay. Okay.
The second part of that, aside from the risk assessment, is she somewhat supervises them, so if they're released with terms and conditions, she supervises them, make sure that they're writing by those terms and conditions, she gets them, they're testing with them. And that's out of both Mineral and Pershing County, and then she also does supervision of the land or showing. And then there's also post-conviction supervision where they are placed on court supervised probation. And the same thing, she's checking in with her, making sure they're writing by the terms and conditions that court target for, if not, she files reports with her violation for a weekly report for that is court.
All right, so she keeps tabs on them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing else on there?
We finally got the law library remodeled.
Yep.
That took a while.
Actually, those, those two rooms are gonna be called from your image of defense now. Cause one of their questions is, do you have a place where the plant and the trade can have confidential dialogues? You do have that, I have two rooms, so.
There's a new law now too that's been proposed. I don't think it's been approved. I think it's just been proposed, that nursing mothers have a private place to nurse, in the public, you know, anybody coming in for a trial or whatever has a private place. And I was thinking, if nothing else, they could use that and just put do not disturb on the door or whatever, but I mean, that could be used for that. I mean, not like we're gonna have a lot or anything, but, but you're supposed to have a private place, but not a bathroom, you know, kind of thing.
So we basically tried to keep the, the balance of the same. Rina and I talked about the revenues, and you're getting about a thousand dollars a year for law library fees, and so we decreased the general fund by a thousand. On the, on the revenue base, we kept the budget about the same. And I know I talked to you about it. But when I first got here, the, the type of law library budget was like a hundred thousand.
It's so hard, yeah.
And so we went in first cutting things back to get it. And of course it was that high because Judge Young sued the county, and the county lost. And so it pretty well dictated what he guys were gonna pay.
Have we put a computer in the law library where people could access?
I'm not aware of that happening.
Yeah, I don't think that it has, but I haven't looked, so, so that's probably one of the things that we need to get done. Okay. All right.
That it?
Good job, as always.
The last one is drug court. It's multi.
No, I can't read. No, you're fine. You're fine, I'm getting better. Or peel off or whatever.
So we have two drug courts, we have the Pershing County Drug Court, and then we have the Pershing County House State Drug Court. The, um, the drug court here is paid by grant funding of about forty-five thousand dollars. The other one is paid primarily through the fees that we collect for the program. We charge a certain fee, I think. Yeah, I think it's like twenty-four hundred dollars for this fee. We started the case, the morning man case, cases, because it was hard to, to manage those cases, but essentially, so the, the, it's Department fifty-two is just Pershing County, and that's all the grants, and then Department fifty-three is the outstate, we have some salaries within that, um, or my, if you pay my salary, that she's administrative that, and then we pay her another. There's a jet bunch.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, you just get the, you get the reimbursement.
So on fifty-three, the bottom line says it's a deficit of twenty-six thousand, am I reading that right?
Yeah, we're spending more than we're bringing in.
That's the overall deficit here.
Okay.
They'll take the revenue less all expenses.
Yeah, it didn't look right when I just looked at that page, but I, I think.
We were within the budget, but the budget. We're running out of money in there, we'll, we'll have to make some changes eventually. If we don't spend it down, the state, state will, then I have the grant funding, so. Any question, any other questions?
So, yeah, I have one, on the revenues, the drug court admin assessment fee, is that the fee that you're saying that you charge the people?
Yes.
Okay, because the diversion program fees is what, because this year ten thousand, oh, sorry. It's on the revenues for, um, but diversion ten thousand was budgeted this year, but there's nothing budgeted for next year. I'm looking at it. I don't know if it's a grant, or I don't think it's a grant.
I think we, I think we blended that with the drug court admin assessment.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be quite that high with just what we're collecting from the, the local drug court.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, okay.
He did have, that's one that I saw, he did have ten thousand.
Okay.
For this year and the next year.
Okay.
So my year.
And then you'll reduce the other one down to fifteen, is that what you'll do? The drug, drug court admin assessment fees, the next one down? So it'll be fifteen and fifteen, okay. Okay. Yeah, so I, you know, I don't know. I was just looking at the totals twenty-five for this year, so I didn't know it was ten and fifteen. So judge, on this year for the drug court assessment fee? You budgeted ten, are you saying you're gonna spend fifteen?
That's in the revenue.
Yeah, in the revenue, I'm not spending, sorry, in the revenues fifteen?
We won't spend any money in revenue.
No, I know, guy, I'm too busy with that. So if you budgeted ten for revenue, are you anticipating?
I'm thinking that, it appears that maybe we, um, have been paying that money into that, that line and down below.
Okay.
The assessment. But Rain and I can talk about that.
Your today amount is twenty-one thousand, like sixty-three.
Yeah, so it's a matter of appearance. We don't have anything under the other one.
Is that it?
Oh, I have. Thank you, everything you, to help you with, any question you have other than the budget?
You can find some grants for us to build the law enforcement facility. We got a whole long list of things, of buying grants.
I think the sheriff had more opportunities for grants than I did.
Homeland Security, maybe we can get it under that.
Yeah, there's, um, just so you know, we're gonna be applying, um, to the state for some COVID money for the courts, and I'm not sure what we're gonna be asking for yet, but it's just as hard as he wants to see, is to be able to have jury trials, and have those be as safe as possible, so. I'm not sure how you could do that in this courtroom, but.
Can you do via Zoom?
No, it's pretty hard to have jurors up there.
Yeah, I'm just being funny.
You could have witnesses potentially there on Zoom, but to have the jurors, none of their. One of the things we might do is, it, with our, when we switched over from Jabs, um, we get a certain number of, a bank of headphones that people can listen to. We might get more of those, so that people that are out in the audience, because if we have a jury trial here, we would have to spread everybody, not just in the jury box, without the audience, so we can get the distancing, but if we do that, then it might be advantageous to have better apparatus to, to hear what's going on. We already have some.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, okay.
Good to see you, Dan.
Yes.
You're keeping Cheryl busy.
Oh, shit.
With safety.
So we don't block anybody until three o'clock, but we can start on some of the others.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest with what?
With what?
Cause they're eleven, all right, one eleven.
One dash eleven, I got it. And then we do more releases, and then it's mine, we might be able to get off three minutes, thirty minutes.
Are you guys just listening, which is fine, or are you, okay? I just didn't want you to have, not some, say something and, you know.
Before we start on that, if you all look at this sheet that I gave you.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a summary of the general fund. With all of the beginning fund balances, the estimates for revenues this year and next year, the expenses for this year and next year. The four percent requirement that I told you about, we have to have an ending from balancing the general fund of at least two hundred and twenty thousand, four twenty-one. With this first preliminary run of what I've done, we're at two forty-eight, nine fifty-two, which is only about thirty-eight thousand above where we need to be. And that includes the transfers that go to, as an expense, to law enforcement, law library, and eleven two. So our general fund right now is in balance, but there's really no cushion. The revenues is the new sheet you're gonna come to in the general fund. I do not have the tax revenues yet, those three percent, that's not going into March twenty-fifth. It's duplicated our current property tax amount, it could come in the same or it could come in less. And then I don't get those until late on the twenty-fifth, and then we all have to go back and adjust general fund, indigent, recreation, outdoor, all of the, the library and extension. The state did send out a final revenue, our CTX revenue increased maybe about thirty thousand dollars from their preliminary to their final estimates. They are nudging us to be very conservative. We usually budget that we're gonna anticipate receiving about ninety-two percent of property taxes. I did put math on that the other day, we're at about eighty-two percent right now. I don't know, Lacey, we don't get a lot of tax payments in from now to the end of June.
No, we'll be sending out our one-year notice dates, so that'll bring in some, and then we will have a tax bill before the end of this four years.
On the plus side is our personal property taxes, is that at about a hundred and twenty percent being received, sure, it really took a turnaround. Why, I don't know, but we're low on the regular real property, but we're high in the personal. The issue is personal, of course, is never as large as the real property.
I think we had an increase from building one month, that's why.
Pretty much the rest of the projections and we'd be next year's revenue, I just averaged out, tried to be very, very conservative. I'm transferring from pill, taking pill down to the bare minimum that it can be left at, which is that four percent to on the fourth page of revenue, you'll see that I'm estimating transferring one point five nine in this year and next year one point eight.
So, I'm reading, I'm sorry, but on the personal property tax, and maybe I'm not seeing this right, I have to get acclimated again, twenty-twenty-one year-to-date activity is eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, projections for this year is five sixty-three.
And probably, Carol, some of this is because I had these.
Oh, because it came in, okay.
And I printed last week, and when I reprinted it, perhaps everything that had been posted to that late.
Okay.
So yes, I need to go back and probably increase those. At least to be true, um, and it's gonna be just probably on the personal property, because like I said, it.
And then, yeah, both, and the delinquent one too, yeah. I'm sorry, I just, it, it just popped out, and I just was wondering, but that makes sense, yeah, because you can't.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
It's just.
Too hard.
So that might increase the revenues a little bit, I mean, you're looking at maybe.
Just under two hundred, what, two hundred thousand, two hundred and.
Unless the estimates that come in from the state on the twenty-fifth are lower than, if it's straight back. And the CTX revenue, as usual, we're two months in a row, it's all the time. So if you don't have any questions on the revenue side, visit that before you move into the state. We can go on to have eleven emission budget. This one's pretty much straightforward, it's, you know, not by a lot.
No, we're going. Oh, and see, this is the same thing, office supplies, we've spent nine oh six, but we've only projected eight hundred, you know, that, there's gonna be things like that because of the. Oh, so you're gonna have to move that up to thirteen hundred and something?
Yes.
So from eighteen, eight hundred to what, thirteen hundred, or is it leaving even the four hundred, and what was the cartridge?
They're expensive.
Yeah, so do you need to make it like fourteen hundred or something?
And I'm trying to say that, that the big things come back to the main part, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Well, we've saved money on travel this year, because everything's by Zoom.
Did you hear Joseph?
You might wanna update her, but I said that if my printer cartridge was costing that much, you might look at it differently. So for next year?
As a printer gets getting some page.
Yeah, so how much do you need to, to put in for a printer, just about?
I would say for, for a small office printer, since she would be using it, um, I would, I would say you would want five.
Okay, that was my guess too, so, small tool then, so. Yeah, for next year.
Where'd you go?
Number twelve, quick version.
The election expense, we're gonna have to increase to.
Right, you see, or? No, we're gonna get, I have it at like that because we're due with.
When you refunding those next gap.
And we got one today.
So leave it at thirty-two, six.
Yes.
Okay. I can't remember if you did it that way, this one year, Pam said no, the next year she says.
I believe we've all been done it.
So under computer supplies, Lacey, um, you have a hundred for this year, but nothing for your projections, you're not gonna spend anything, okay? And are you still gonna need four thousand this year for postage?
Probably, because we have our one year and three year letters to go out.
Okay, and then plus you.
Did a juror entry yesterday, quarter, postage, she got.
Okay.
See you, Dan.
Yeah, all of our notices.
The property sale that you're gonna have, you'll have a list for us on, okay? Yeah. Election expense, so are you finished with that, so the fifty-seven thousand?
That's what we're just talking about, the reason why the projection is less, because I'm getting reimbursements from the state.
Okay, and you think that'll be?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
So the reimbursement goes in as a credit, and then it's also over budgeted, because I have grant money that covers some of that.
And I would like to think the twenty is good for the next cycle, but there are a lot of elections that I have no idea.
Yeah, they have their way, they'll be, yeah.
That's two primaries, that's great.
Well, my seat will be on the next one. That's gonna seem strange, for me anyway, but that's okay. Equipment, nothing for next, not, yeah, for next year? You've got 9,000 for this year.
No, I just have small equipment, so I don't have any work.
Okay. So where, do you want to go now?
What the next ad is mine. I think I've explained to you down the wire, it says map fee expense and tech fee expense. We get revenues for that, and we call it restricted money. It can only be used by my department for tech fee expenses, like all of our this energy online. Things we have done, that all comes straight out of those money. In the same with the map fee, we collect map fees announced for our recordings and the map is restricted too. And I will tell you, our map machines, I think on its last legs, when we turn it on, they're caught now, it takes over a half hour to get it. It's probably 20 plus years. So I'm budgeting 75,000 for next year, because if that map machine goes out, they're very responsible to my. So i- in other words, it's a wash.
Yeah.
Collect the special revenues. We don't use all this kept in deferred revenue account.
Okay.
And only use for those.
For those purposes.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I will tell you, our payroll expenses have gone down with the new system, but our accounts payable expenses have gone up. The reason being is we only print maybe 15 live payroll checks. Everything else is directly positive, that's done on regular paint paper. But our accounts payable, if you fill this stuff up with descriptions, it'll void the next check and continue to stub information on the next check. So we are having to buy a lot more accounts payable checks. Less payroll checks, but more accounts payable checks. And then in the accounts payable, expense also is for the pre-stamped envelopes. Any questions?
Chester.
I would go to tab one dash 17, which is general government.
Because Lori's coming in, right?
Uh, yeah. So is James, and then John is scheduled, I think, for tomorrow. This one for general government is. The safety director wages up on the top portion. And then kind of the catch-all for everything else. There's litigation amounts here.
I can't read them upside down. After kind of my eyes. I need to get my reading glasses.
You'll see the COVID-19 expense line item.
Me, where's, nothing this year, where?
Nothing for next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's what.
Because we treat a local ground, so when we do give in, I'm allowed to add to the budget to cover those costs.
So under general government, I'm sure my answer's right. Yeah, that's what I thought. Cheryl, the safety coordinators under the center.
This is where we put Justin when he first came on board to the. So there's some history there from 2019, but nothing for current year or next.
Fire inspector fees. I wonder how many inspections they've done in Arizona.
Justin, in this, I've mentioned it 1,800 for website expenses back after the. Because in 19, we spent 1,800 this year, last year we didn't spend anything.
I was just.
It must have went to. Because currently, we've spent 1,800 this year.
Right.
Am I about?
I, I.
1,018.
I expect. I mean, I'll find my numbers. Well, for next year. For the rest of this fiscal year, we should probably. For the next fiscal year, because we'll have, we'll have our website rule, we'll have our Google lead.
Okay, and that's what I thought for next year. Is that what you know? So I have 1,800 next year and 2,000 this year.
For, for next year, the actions were a bit of.
I'm reading, the elevator expense, you'll need to adjust this year's projection. Probably just 7150, I don't know that we're going to have any more. And then the reason, the safety committee expense, that's actually just safety expense, but it's increased from, this year from 6,300 to 16,300 for next. It's because we have, we need to buy new AEDs, and those are going to last, be, they will last longer.
We have deferred revenue for loss control expense, which can be used for safety too.
Okay.
The auditor, when she was here, kind of suggested that we start using some of those deferred amounts, so 3,500. When you guys buy the AEDs, we can charge 3,500 of it to that loss control.
Okay, and that's this one, the war, loss control award expense, that one, okay.
And I see I have the 3,500 in there.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I asked me to set up a new line item called probation expense, because we had the BLM horse lawsuit line item in the burning end, but he. There was not a kind of a catch-all for other probation. So I created that and.
The Persian County Fire Contractor. Is that one of the fees we pay monthly to, that one's Hydamon too, or two, also, in addition to?
The contractor for.
Yeah.
This with these.
This is.
For what?
He's supposed to be writing grants.
So he's getting this.
He's to get.
For grants?
First, he's getting $6,000, that's what we have to talk about, because it's not happening, and then you had to do some of the grant work.
Only because I wanted to give the money.
Yeah, I know, but.
Doing it, if he's, we're paying somebody to do it.
So going back to the fire inspection fees, Carol, I need to make a projection for this year and put some for next year. Because we've already spent 400, so we paid for January and February.
And it was $200 a month?
Yes, yeah.
Or was it perfection?
No, it's so much amount, and.
The fire department too.
Yes.
And then they in turn pay whoever does.
Well, or do whatever, I mean, that's up to. But I would like a report on the fire inspections.
You'd like what?
A report on what fire inspections have been done.
And this is just county, right?
Yes, just not city, correct?
And this is the.
Yeah, that's, that's.
No, I, I thought it in. I'll just make myself a note, Justin.
Ring, why is fire inspection fees under salaries and not under services and supplies?
And, and.
I think when I set it up, it was still being talked about that the person would be unemployed.
So that needs to be moved down.
So what I'll do is I'll create it under services and supplies, and then we turn on entry with that. A couple changes that I will make here on page two of this area.
Page two of what?
Page two of Department 17. The annual audit, I'll change next year from 88 to be the 91. And then under consulting and budget, I'll reduce that from 8,000 to 5,000. So that we have the 3,000 covered in the regular line. Budgeting consulting. I did, we did changes to the central without a water authority or the basin water.
The association dues, yeah.
I love those assassins. The fire protection program, I assume it's going to stay the same, I haven't heard anything about increase there.
So you see the ones that need to be increased, and you're probably going to have to look at all of these things again, because they keep changing. Like county code updates and stuff like that. Did, we never found out who was making all those colored copies? The machine's set up for that though, isn't it?
It uses a general focus line.
Oh, okay, but it's not set up so that you can assign.
You have to sign, you have, you have to sign E to.
Yeah, but I mean, it won't, it won't handle individual comments.
It will, you just have, every person wants each of each other.
I would suggest we just kind of watch it, I'll watch it the next couple months, and if we still have any increase in that. But just that one month, we'll use it six months.
Yeah.
They went to both.
Access to both.
Yeah, postage meter too, we've got to make a change for this year.
Well, actually, there's about 14,000, someone or credit coming back.
Oh, okay.
The month, the quarterly charges to the departments, it comes back to credit.
Oh, okay. So what do we use miscellaneous expense for, other than miscellaneous expense? Is there anything in particular?
Are you looking at 52100? Or 52850? That one has a lot of. Things where you let people overpay their taxes, we refund that, that account.
Oh, okay.
That's where we started putting the COVID expenses until we realized we needed to track them individually. And then the reserve for future use on the very last pages of the.
Hi, James.
So James is the next. And then when we're done with that, we'll go to.
So I have a question on planning services when, when you get settled. Okay, so this year you budgeted thirty thousand. But you're saying you're only going to need fifteen? And then next year's fifteen thousand?
Um, we're gonna, we're, either way, we're gonna need to change that.
Isn't that what we pay Mark? Is that?
No, Mark comes out of.
Oh, contract.
Contract.
Okay, okay.
Um, planning services is, um, if we have a. If we have to send any plans to, to our engineer for review to, to STANTIC. Um, and I got Cynthia's quote, um, for.
Good.
For that, um, and we're gonna need. More than that.
Okay.
Well, actually, I, I, speaking with her, um, they don't, they don't need any money upfront. All they need is to basically just sign a contract, um, that, that we agreed to, to pay their. The total amount sixty-four thousand.
This is for the development code and the master code.
Uh huh.
To do the review and do.
And that, like, burning the water plant.
Yes, yes. And that's, um, that, that total, I have a quote roll in the office, but that total is sixty-four thousand two hundred. And, and not to exceed. Um, we have. See, we have thirty thousand for this year, right?
Budget, yeah.
Could we put the remainder, say the, the. The rest in the, for the next. Because we don't have to pay anything this.
This current?
Yeah, it won't be until the project is finished. Probably wouldn't be until next year.
So next year, we have to take that fifteen to sixty-four thousand.
Well, when this, when, when the thirty period, we wouldn't have next one?
No, we have to put it.
Yeah.
We have to either put it through or put it here so it's a bottom line of expenses.
So for next year, we'd have to put seventy-nine, two hundred if you just left fifteen thousand for your normal business. Are you following me, James?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I, I got you.
And then for this year, we've only spent three thousand three hundred twenty-five. Do you anticipate anything more? And I don't know how much it is. Would five thousand be enough to, for the remainder of the year? I'm just throwing out a number because I don't know how much it costs to do that.
I would hate to commit to that number because we have.
Yeah.
We have that West Coast salmon project coming. And I don't know, I don't know when that might take. Um, and I don't know what that might cost for, um, for grading, review with our grading end. So.
Doesn't hurt to leave it there.
Or, I mean, we could cut it back to ten.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. I was saying, so we can make this year ten.
Yeah, I think we are.
And then seventy-nine, two hundred for next year. Okay.
The contract payments, we may have to increase.
Yeah, and not just for this year, but contract payments. That's Mark, right?
Yeah.
So when we have the salmon farm and anything else, won't his, won't it be more than forty thousand or, or not? I don't know.
Potentially a combined total, it, it, it could be. But we're also going to build into.
There.
The, the permit fee, we're going to build in.
Right.
A lot of these other fees, such as if we have to use show engineering, we're going to build those fees into the permitting. So, uh, if, if we want to increase it.
Even if there's revenue, it may be, you soft a budget.
Do you want to leave it at forty and just see where it goes and then? And Rena, it's up to you, whatever you think. Is it? Because you'd have to, you wouldn't have to, would you have to augment?
If you went.
The general one that have the transfer.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have to do an augmentation. You could just transfer.
I'm for this year, I think, do you think James seven thousand would be enough? We're already at six thousand, we're on fifteen for the service.
This, you have March, April, May, June. Actually, either three and a half months.
I, I'm guessing, like I said, I'd hate to commit to that number because I, I don't think they're going to submit until. Late fall. So, um, so I, I, I think we have time, but I don't know if they, if they gather their stuff and, and they're able to submit earlier.
I thought they were going to be signing around June first.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be earlier.
Yeah, he said he was moving here in April, so.
They've had some issues that they've had to, they've had to work through. And, and I don't know if they're going to be submitting. Preliminary stuff. We're, we have a meeting on, on the seventh with, with their, with our folks to get a, an updated project. An, an upgraded timeline. So I know that's changed.
If we made this year thirty thousand, you've already spent six thousand. That leaves like twenty-four, twenty-three?
Yeah.
Would that be enough?
I, yeah, that should be plenty. It's a dissection.
Well, and.
Okay, so thirty thousand this year, forty thousand next year.
Well, next year, if we're going to have to increase that because. I don't know, have any idea what it's going to cost. For a project.
Probably next year.
I mean, is seventy thousand?
I was thinking sixty.
Okay, so we're not too far off. I was thinking seventy.
So fifty instead of.
Thirty and sixty.
Thirty and sixty, yeah, thirty and sixty.
So another twenty thousand, which, I mean, you haven't spent it all anywhere, but still.
And then that, that thirty is, is high. But I don't, I don't necessarily think we're going to spend all of that, but.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I just throw this out there.
The what?
The cushion we had in the general fund is now gone.
Because of what?
Because we increased twenty-five thou, we've increased forty-five thousand just in this budget.
For the, for our four percent ending fund balance.
Right. Just trying to keep you aware as we're.
Well, we could leave it like that for right now and then just see what happens as we go along. Question mark. Oh my goodness. So have you signed up for any training, James? And I don't know what's available out there.
Um, right now, nothing, nothing is still.
But you were going to, uh.
Yeah, I.
On commercial.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the plan. As soon as they start offering.
And they're not doing it remotely or distance learning or anything?
No, their, their stuff is, is basically like secret squirrel stuff where there has to be a physical person, um, in the room.
Yeah.
At all times, keeping eyes on, on their materials so it doesn't go anywhere. So, uh, yeah, they don't even do a.
And James, remember this conversation? As soon as. Soon as they start doing it, person is going to take the certification.
Okay, great. And then Eric, is Eric the new person? Um, he wants training too, right?
Yeah.
In different things, I mean.
Yeah, he's going, uh, he's actually, he's going to TMCC, uh, for construction management right now.
Oh, great.
So, uh, he is. I don't want to overload him, but once he's done with that, I mean, we are going to start doing the, the same thing. He's going to get some certifications just through college, but. Once he gets done with college, I think he's going to graduate next year sometime. So, once he's done with that, then we'll, we'll get him started too. But the money we have in that, in the training and travel is going to be fine for that.
Okay, fair.
And then just so you know, this, he's requesting.
Yeah.
I did miss that. I looked at. I don't know how I did that.
I have a capital outlay, a new truck.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
And, uh.
I went right by it.
Thirty-five hundred for a, a printer. When we get our, our Cessna program, we're going to need a printer better than what we got just.
And you think it'll cost that much? I mean, that's got to be a really heavy duty printer for that.
Um, I looked at it, I'm actually, that's. For a decent one, that's, that's about everything I could get. I could get a cheaper one, but then it's not.
No, I'm just. Yeah.
We go, we want to.
We might have to change account numbers if it does come in at puris by then, we'll have to move it down.
Okay.
Just because of that three thousand.
And, and I actually. Unless I have the account number longer than I did.
So do you need the whole thirty-five hundred moved down to capital outlay?
Please.
And then under small equipment tools for next year? Zero? I mean, are you going to have any small equipment tools?
See, that's where.
I don't think so, but that's.
That's where it was.
Exactly.
So all this moving down is something to change the, which is the matter.
And this, okay, this year for small equipment and tools, are you going to spend the three thousand? Because you've got down three thousand.
Actually, I think I put that in there just, I, I wasn't exactly sure, but I don't think it's.
Okay, good. That helps. Thank you.
You don't need.
I got you through.
You don't need anything for new person?
No, he's, he's, he's pretty much got what, what he needs and any, anything else I think that he does need, well, we would be able to, to get it figured out in the other, in the rest of the budget.
So this year and next year will be zero under small equipment and tools? Both, both?
Um, yeah, as long as the printer can be coming out.
Yeah, it'll have to. And so vehicle forty thousand?
Yeah, um, that was either, either a Chevy or GMC pickup. We haven't had a. We haven't had a new trucks since two thousand.
You have what?
Well, I, it, new use would be. No, and it, and it was already, it, it was tired when we got it, um, with only seven thousand.
So then we would put that out for auction then, the old one, your old one?
I mean, yeah, I think actually, um, there might be a, because there are interested in my, if, if we get it, then I'd be interested in.
Or also buildings and grounds vehicles are really bad.
Yeah, well, that's why, okay, so they, it's, it's healthy enough for them to use locally.
Yeah, it's just, it's with, with going to Emily and then every month going to Reno for the water sample and then.
Doesn't trust it calling to Reno.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes when I'm taking time sensitive. Samples to, to Reno, I'll take my own truck because I don't trust that one.
Yeah.
Um, I don't want to break down and, and then have to.
How many miles?
Um, it's only got a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, like, that's, that's nothing for a county vehicle, but it's.
What, what about the assessor's jeep? I mean, I realize now we're not using it because we're not going out in the field, but.
Um, and I, I looked at that too, but, um, I think, uh, for what we carry in the back, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Because you have to read meters and everything else with that vehicle, huh?
Yeah, and, and I want to put a camper on it to get the, the stuff that we have in the back, um, out and a camper that's got some utility. Stuff on the side so I can get the equipment out of, from behind the seat.
Yeah.
Um, and put it in.
So the forty thousand will cover that and the camper? The, the shell?
We're close.
It, it's going to be, it's going to be close. The, the, the shell is probably going to be about ten thousand. Um, give or take. Um, I could find one for less, but the, they're, they're the cheaper ones, but.
But then you're going to find a truck for thirty? I'm just asking.
Well.
I haven't seen that truck from thirty.
When I put that number out, I was, I was looking on the GMC website and, and I think just their base models are, are around thirty-two. So if I got the. If I got the camper for cheaper, maybe it would be close, but.
You can, so we should make this forty-five probably.
Yeah, a little bit more.
If.
And no, and I'm not saying you have to spend it, just.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would find that, that would give a little bit.
What was the cost of the road department just got?
I, I don't know, because I, I haven't even seen it.
Was that Dan's new one?
I know the. That's the Chevy Silver.
And, and that would be, I'd be all right with a silk, with a Chevy or.
That, that was a four door?
Yes, yeah, with four. And that Dan's, I think, has that, um, the utility, that utility kit, which makes it more expensive.
Well, that's why I was just thinking we could do it.
You don't need the utility, do you?
No, no, I don't, I don't need the utility. I just, just the standard bed, I would just.
So the campers, the campers we got were two of the fire command vehicles. Even with a slide, even sliding.
I, I looked at it.
Out. Rain, weren't they around five thousand each?
Oh, okay, so they weren't.
They're not.
Well, and I, well, the ones with the slide wouldn't do the, wouldn't do.
You don't need the slide. E- even the ones we got with the second set, they were, that was caravan camper. They were still in that same range.
I, I could probably find, I looked at several different places and that. They were, they were anywhere from, from around seven to, to ten.
But you need it for the, for like tools at this top or that has.
Yeah.
Place for tools.
Yeah, so I would need like someplace to store, to get our toolbox out from behind the seat, um, so you can get your tools where you can get them. And then with. Get our, our, the pipe fittings and all the.
I think you're, you're way over, but so like the, the AREs are with that.
Actually, that's what I. That's what I was.
Chevy and Chevy state purchasing for a three-quarter ton Chevy extended gas for business twenty, just under twenty-seven.
Uh, okay. Oh, okay, so forty is plenty.
It's, it's, it's right there.
I was, I, I don't have a way to look at, at the state purchasing stuff, otherwise I'm going to.
Yeah.
And if I can get it for state purchasing, that would.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the way to go.
And that was a three-quarter ton?
Yes, sir.
I, I wouldn't need extended cab, but.
Oh.
Yeah, the, the extended cabs are, it's like driving around a tank or a, a yacht.
Well, that's.
Four door, wouldn't it? Standing cabs just about a small, the, like a small back.
It's a smaller, the, the cab portion is bigger and you have the, your, the standard bed size, which standard bed size is more.
But there would be room for your tools behind, in the back seat, basically, instead of behind your seat. It's like Bruce's, you know, pickup.
Yes.
With the suicide doors.
Yeah.
And never buy one.
Yeah, no, I, I like that. Well, and I guess if you could. Put tools and stuff back there, but I kind of.
Or golf clubs.
Um, yeah, but that's what I would like.
Okay, so we could leave the forty just the way it is and then you'll do, you'll make the best buy you can.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I did, I did look at the, um, that AREE. Um, and then, and they, they had some decent.
And they were great to work with.
Or, and then, and if they, they have something that works, then you could do that too.
You don't want a Cybertruck jeans?
I would, I would take the, the new electric GMC.
So where are you going to plug it in at?
Chevron.
Yeah.
And, and Emily, where are you?
If I run out of juice in it.
Okay. And the salaries are okay as far as your new person, too?
Um, yeah, he actually came in, um, actually less than what Holly wants.
Okay.
So the new guy's got some experience?
He does. He's got some, um, he's got some certifications, um, through his college already, through ACC. Um, he's in. He's in year. Three of, of, of the college and he's got, um. Three of, of, of the college, and he's got, um. Kind of like, uh, uh, understanding plans and, and reading them from the contractor's standpoint.
That's great.
Yeah.
You're, you're very fortunate.
I, I, I got very.
And he was from, God, here?
Yeah.
He interned shift in the district.
Yeah, I, I knew that, I didn't know anything about his other background.
He graduated in two thousand nineteen, yeah.
That's great.
He's, he's young, he's only twenty, but.
Listen, there's nothing wrong with being young.
Nope, and he's, he's catching on quick, so. I'll please look that.
That's good, so Emily Water is. How much do we need for the water tower to put a new one in? Just give me a full figure.
Ballpark, four hundred thousand.
Three hundred?
At least.
Yeah, okay, I just needed some ideas.
No, and, and, and actually, I was. I was thinking that too, so I mean, it just worked, that, we have our tank cleaning, um, this year, our tank cleaning and inspection, um, so. I, I, I think after that, we'll, we're gonna have a better idea of where we're at.
And there, there is some federal, um, infrastructure money, but I'm not quite sure yet what we can spend things on, so. I, that's why I wanted to know.
Yeah, and, and with that, if we, if we did do that, um, upgrade, and I don't. We might think about, um. Either upgrading well-to or drilling a new, drilling a new well. Just for, um, if we.
If back.
Yeah, for backup, and if we have to run, run simultaneously, if we have to have both of those tanks online, at least we would have two wells to feed them. And we would probably want in that money to, um. Have our, have well. The motor and pump and well one, um, replaced. Um, the last, the, the last I checked, we weren't, we weren't on the list for anyone.
I'm sorry, replace motor on?
Uh, the, the pump and motor in, in number one.
Number one, okay, thank you. I started writing and then it left my brain.
I think we're okay on, um. For the water, um, I, I, the repair and maintenance, we need to, we need to keep that, um, at that thirteen thousand, cause that, that could get eaten up. At any second.
We talked about, um, the fees too for the water at some point, because the, the ending fund balance keeps going down. One year. So. The revenue is only like thirty-six thousand, and the expenses are whatever, seventy, eighty thousand. And usually about seventy, and then you're doing the, the tank cleaning, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why it's a little bit more.
Yeah, that'll come out of the.
But it's not self-sustaining at all. They complain as it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and as it stands, it, it's definitely not self-sustaining, and, and they think the twenty-seven fifty is high. And they, and they don't wanna pay that.
And, and is that based on gallons used, or?
Yeah. Um, it's based on gallons used. Zero, zero to ten thousand is twenty-seven fifty, and past that, it goes up in increments to thirty-two fifty, thirty-six dollars and forty dollars.
But we're still a lot less than Love Lock Meadows.
Yeah, well, that's thirty, it costs me a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month.
Yeah, there are, there are some people out there, if it were, if it were my water bill, um, here for Love Lock Meadows, I mean, they would, they would have a two to three hundred dollar one. And. In most cases now, it's only, I mean, it would be only seventy, eighty dollars.
I still think it was, with the, with the right talking, they would take over that system.
Oh, Love Lock Meadows?
Um, yes. Well. I've talked to Rusty several times.
Well, I, I, I think I say it just about every time that I'm in here, um, is that's, that, that's a conversation that, that needs to happen. If, if, if they don't wanna take it over completely, at least enter into a, um, an MOU for maintenance.
Yeah.
And then, then at least that way, that takes, that takes some of the burden off of us, and, I mean, they're, they're responsible for the maintenance, and they'll still do the billing. And that portion of it, but, um, maintenance, I mean, they still help out a lot, anyway, but.
How do you? They wouldn't do it, wanna do it without the revenue.
Oh, no, they have.
No, they would, they would.
They would increase, yeah.
Yeah, they, they would basically take our repair and maintenance. Budget, and, and probably, probably some out of personnel, cause it would, I don't know if they would want another person or, or something, but, I mean, that, that, that's a conversation for you guys.
Yeah, but if they took over the water dis, this utility, then, no, we wouldn't have to worry about it, and they could charge what they charge.
And that's, and that's, they would have their own rate.
Yes.
The customers wouldn't like it.
Yeah.
But they would have their own rate.
Yeah, I mean, and, and quite frankly, they would probably have a better system, I mean, because they, they have the people, and a lot of them know how, um, to do it and get it. And get a lot of that stuff done, that takes extra money for us to do, because we have to generally hire out for it, where they can do it in-house.
So, we need to have a meeting with the water board? We need to talk to Rusty first and see whether he would recommend that, because if he says no.
Well, and I think at some point, some point down the road, it, the, the state is going to end up forcing the larger water districts in the county to take some of the, the, the smaller ones. So, I think eventually it might happen, but is it gonna happen soon enough before?
Yeah.
So, can you?
If it even happens at all.
Can you have that serious conversation with Rusty?
Um, I, I have, and he tells me that, if they need to talk to the board. I don't.
He's asked me to come, ask the same thing, but come to a board to ask it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think he, he is opposed to it. I think it's, it, it, it's the board that might have some heartache, and I, I think if it was put to them, that. How it could work, or however you guys wanna work it, that, I mean, that might be something that, that they might entertain, so, I, I think that would be in the county's probably best interest.
Not to change the subject, but the new road department truck was twenty thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars.
Oh, that's it? That's great.
That's good.
So, you should.
Was that through state purchasing too?
They got it through Champion, but it is on the state purchasing contract.
Okay, and, and I've, I've never done that before, so I would probably need help.
I don't have Dan. That's who I send everyone to.
To Dan, okay.
Or Jerry.
Okay. So, if I get the okay to, to, to buy it, just go talk to him.
Make sure it's titled under Persian County, very good.
And, and make sure it's not before July first.
Yeah, yeah.
If you start the process, and you can tell them that you just can't receive it until after.
And can't be billed.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, we can't be billed or take delivery until after July one.
Exactly, and they understand that.
Okay, alright, so I'll talk to them.
Talk to?
Uh, Dan.
Oh.
Actually, shouldn't some of that truck expense come out of Emily Water?
I was thinking, I was thinking that too.
That's why you have that.
I was thinking that too, I just didn't know how to scout you this way.
Well, yeah, and there's not a lot of money in here either.
And it could also come out of. Persian County Power.
Um, I don't think that's a big money maker.
Yeah.
But could we split it between the two?
Between them.
I mean, that takes the ending fund balance of that fund even further down.
Yeah, that would, that would take the, or any fund balance in there.
But I, I'm thinking that we could split the cost between the Emily utility or water and planning, because you use it for both.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, however you guys wanna work it out, how it works best.
And that actually helps a little bit with the general fund ending fund balance. Not by much, a little bit.
So. So, what, what it helps, going back to the planning, if we took that tech contract, I mean, so fifteen thousand instead of thirty? Cause you look at, you, you look at, you, you haven't been in nineteen and twenty, it was fifteen thousand two nineteen, or two ninety-four.
See, we're at.
And we're at that already.
I mean, just nine thousand more of them. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, why don't you just take the thirty down to twenty? For this year? Would that be enough? That would give you fourteen, just under fourteen.
Yeah, I, I think so.
So, we could make it twenty.
Okay.
And then we could take the vehicle and take twenty, well, that's next year though, that won't. But we can take next year's vehicle and say twenty thousand for next year, and then put twenty thousand under Emily utility for the vehicles. Which doesn't have a line item, but we can make one.
Okay, so, can I, is that what we have left as a thing?
That's depreciation. Annual depreciation's been, uh, right around thirty-six to forty, so we have forty-two percent sure. We really can't mess with that, cause it's done in excess.
How many water customers?
Uh, we have ninety-eight.
Nine, ninety-eight? More than that, well.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, we could be. Maybe by the, this year, next year, um, we could. We could have over. I think there were, there were a few people that were wanting, want some hookups, but they haven't had anything firm. No, no, uh, thank you guys, so I can, I'm, I'm okay to, to get started talking to Dan, just as long as they understand we can't do anything until July one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan's gonna refer you to Jeff's.
Okay, well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're back on tab one dash fourteen. Which is the assessment.
Hello. So, Lori, have you interviewed for best position yet, or?
We have, um. That's until the end of the month, and we have Jennifer Hill every Friday until the middle of May, and then she will be coming on full-time. So, until she is on full-time, um, you're gonna wait. The three of us are splitting, um, that load. And so, so far, just having, um, Morgan, this is the last week and a couple days, has been very beneficial, we're getting very close to billing our personal property. When it's good for you, of course.
Whenever, do it.
Yeah, that will bring in some great revenue, you know, um, she, in two days, helped me get into a very comfortable place with that, which was a real struggle.
I, I was unaware that someone in my office told you guys to hold off, so you do it when you're ready.
Oh, thank you, Lacey, because I was respecting that, um, input. That will really help some revenue, we have, um, I was just looking over an account that's astronomical.
A customer is calling every day, wondering where those bills are.
Same with me, they've been calling for months, so normally, um, personal property per NRS, you have until April thirtieth of every calendar year to bill. Um, currently, without the growth, but if we do start these other projects, it will be hard to, um, have it done within one month. Valerie and I used to be able to normally have it done by October, November, would you agree with that, Lacey? And so, people are very confused as to why they haven't received their bills, well, there was only me and Samantha, the contract employee, working on them. And she can only work one day a week on them, um, because she's a full-time employee, so, um, we're in a really good place to do some bills now. And get that revenue coming in. So, there'll be no interviews until maybe, you know, maybe we can scoot along with these two ladies for a while, without having to bring somebody on.
That would be nice. So, you're anticipating no vehicle expense for this fiscal year under projections? You have budgeted five hundred, nothing's been spent.
Let me go to that line. Oh, sorry, thank you, sorry, my eyes are changing. We may hit the field, now that I have Morgan here with me, but you know, with my prior appraiser, she was out exactly one year to the date that she resigned. There was not a lot of field activity, we were doing desk appraisals, so, I don't think that there's going to be any maintenance, we're not even near due for an oil change.
Oh, really, that's one.
There could be some, there could be some fuel, so unless there's. An unforeseen, I would say that is fine.
Actually, with fuel, we need to put something in there, cause we spent almost twenty-four dollars.
Okay. So, you need to put a hundred dollars in there?
We should have something.
Thank you, cause we, we do plan to get out and pick up some new construction, that represents revenue as well. Thanks, Rain, I didn't see that. And Carol, you jumped to that line, because did that just catch your attention, or how?
Oh, no, I was, I was going down the, and that's the only one I had, a real question, I mean, there's computer supplies and expense. You haven't spent anything, you budgeted five hundred this year, it's further up, and you don't project anything for.
I purchased the assessor's computers out of the tech fund, so I don't think that I need anything, Justin graciously brought me over a camera, so, um.
Yeah. So, no, that was the only, I got that far down, and that's the only one I had a question at that point.
We could probably use one more monitor for our new appraiser, but I do believe that would be covered under the, the tech fund as well.
We're gonna need to increase the tax roll preparation, because we've already spent thirty-eight.
So, in our new software, all forms that go out are now letter forms. So, I have inconvenienced these ladies in the building with postage shortages, envelope shortages, it used to all be on these little cars. Through the AS four hundred and that old clunky, um, printer that would, you know, put them through our tractor feed, if you will, and they had our bulk rates stamped on them. Well, you know, last December, I probably sent out ten thousand assessment notices, and we just did our tax cap forms, and next comes our. Personal exemptions, whether you're a widow, or, or a veteran, so everything has really changed, and I've been picking Rain's brain a lot about. Ordering those pre-stamped envelopes, I got a quote from the prison, um, which was really cheap per box, but. It's been a learning curve for me this last year with the new software program.
So you, but you budgeted thirty-eight hundred for the tax rule prep? Do you think, well, you've spent thirty-eight sixteen?
It's going to go up because in July, when, um, it comes time to close the, the log, so Lacy can bill, I have to send assessment notices again to anyone that has had a value increase. So this is, this is a reflection of my learning curve.
So do you need another thousand in there? Do you need like forty-eight hundred? Do you need, I, I'm just, because I don't know.
Not that much, Carol, but I'm going to need some more.
So forty-five, maybe?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, that isn't the right way on what we want to go, but that's.
It comes under, but I, I just can't say with, yeah, the learning curve.
Cool. Are you, the contract payments, um, you estimate sixty-three hundred for this year?
Now, that's for the two story county.
Oh, okay.
Stuff.
So I, I realize we probably have spent more than the sixteen hundred that shows, because maybe something hasn't hit yet. But do you think you'll need all of that sixty-three hundred?
Um, the personal property is coming to a close, but the real property, we were left in a very unfortunate situation. So I cannot answer. We have approximately, probably another two hundred seventy-five appraisal files that were supposed to be done by December eighteenth last year that were not completed by our prior employee. And we're working on them on weekends and as much as we can. That would be Jana and I. Where is the real property appraiser? Samantha is personal property. I'm hoping it's not that much.
One thing you might look at too is, we projected her salaries and benefits to come in quite a bit lower this year than what was budgeted. But these contract payments are gonna be part of that, just in a, a little different manner.
I was just thinking of the ending fund balance, you know, so.
And then Shayla, on this one, she also has the tech fee expense, which is handled like my required. So it's restricted money that can only be used for certain statues.
And, and not employee wages, unfortunately. And there's a bill out there right now, and I meant to bring it to you. I don't know if you've heard of it, Lacy Irving, but, um, taxation is, um, for centrally assessing our mines, or if they do geothermal or any industrial, they're going after a percentage now that would, infect our check funds. It's going to really impact rural counties, and I can share that spreadsheet with Rina and Lucy. So there could be some big changes in, in tech funds, at least for the assessors. There hasn't been much travel because we, you know, not only COVID, but we have been so short-staffed. Morgan may have to, um, attend a class or two, and, uh, if they offer an exam, go start her exam process, but that would be it for this year.
So we increased fuel expense for this year to a hundred, and then we have forty-five hundred for the tax rule. Is there any way that we can take contract payments down to five thousand to help make up that difference? Or do you really think that would short you? I'm not trying to do that. I'm just asking.
I, I can't answer, Carol, to be quite honest. It could put us in a pickle, because we need to try and have those.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to.
I'm hoping, you know, grass valley is where the folders were remaining, and it's, it's not the easiest appraisal cycle out there. There are so many parcels, and there is a lot of stuff on the parcels. If we were in the city of Love Lock, I would say that would be a problem.
I don't see anything else. The salaries reflect what the new salaries are that we approved. It looked like to me. On the salary sheets. Hi, Sean.
So this is what Rina was talking about, the total budgeted salary was three-three-eight.
Yeah.
And then it dropped, but of course, the.
Well, part of the reason it dropped is because her prior appraiser was at a higher level than this new company.
Well, also too, you, you limped along without Valerie, too, and.
Since last June.
Yeah, and so, I mean, there are, there are changes like that. So the new salaries that we approved for the assessor and, uh, admin work, that's reflected in the salaries here. It looks like it to me.
There is one change that Chris needs to be made, and it has to do with, um, I think Morgan selected to be E's and R's.
Oh, okay.
Higher rate.
Okay.
But then it would change the first round, so it's kind of a wash.
Yeah. Okay. Good job, Lori.
I'm trying to handle it. And Jana, of course, she knows that the contract employee is very aware of, you know, the budgets and.
Oh, yeah.
We're trying not to go over.
You have the same cup?
Oh.
I was wondering, how my cup gets me there?
Did you have any other questions, or?
Nope, nope, nope. You're good.
Thank you.
I wasn't too painful. Thank you. I know it. It's awesome. Yeah.
He's, um, white tab one dash twenty-four.
No capital outlay?
No.
What's that?
No capital outlay, no.
Yes, um. There's no capital outlay this year.
No, but for next year.
This, because it shows, didn't show any, so.
Oh, you did.
She made it to four thousand dollars.
At four thousand for a heavy-duty truck bumper and a winch.
Is that for next year?
Yes.
But actually, they're two thousand each, so they're gonna have to go under small equipment.
Actually, there's what?
They're two thousand dollars each, so they have to be go under small equipment.
And our limit is three thousand?
Yeah, okay.
I can get more if that's what you want.
No. So under small equipment for next year, you've got twelve thousand two hundred. And, yeah, do we have four thousand to that, or is the four thousand in there?
So, no, it's not that. Well, I, I didn't, for small equipment, I put that in the total.
Okay.
Four thousand, he had capital outlay, but that really needs to move down to showing the eight-two-hundred. He has a small.
Okay, all right, good. So it is in there.
And he has, like, medical equipment, hose replacement, hand tools, batteries for SCVAs.
Yeah, because we don't have, um, you know, I just have it right here. I can go make talk. Gosh.
This far, I'm gonna make him a brilliant tomorrow.
That's funny, yeah.
Because the individual items are under thousand and twelve, too. So it's covered.
So the grand total on the sheet for next year is twelve-two-hundred is correct?
Okay, good.
I'll just bring it to the back.
Thanks, sir.
So Sean, the, the training numbers? So this year so far, you really haven't done much of anything, right?
No, we haven't.
So it's gonna go, you're gonna still spend two thousand this year?
Yeah, we'll be close to that. We have some, uh, we, we do want to put on that, uh, emergency medical responder class. So we're pretty good on the firefighter one class. We got those books through that grant. So that took some of that away, but, uh, we do want to put on that emergency medical responder class, and then CPR training and all that. Our, um, our source for that is, you know, we used to get that pretty much for free, um, from my previous employer, but that's kind of dried up.
So you, you cut yourself short by, what, seven, seven fifty or so in nineteen hundred?
Where are you, where are you?
You don't, well, in that training step.
For next year.
So I'm just, I mean, you always need training.
This is the budget right now.
Yeah.
Six fifteen, you're saying that you're only gonna spend two thousand.
Yeah, and I, I think that's reflective of the fact that we got a lot of those books, uh, for the firefighter one through that grant. But, um, and so I, you know, I, I don't see us extending it at all.
You don't think you'll spend out?
You know, our, our philosophy.
I just didn't want to short yourself.
Sure, no, I appreciate it. Our philosophy has been, you know, we don't like to send people out, but we like, we prefer to bring stuff in-house to maximize the benefit. I know, you know, some departments like to send people out to conferences and stuff, and we, we tend not to do that much.
Okay.
Oh, wow, vehicle expense.
Yeah, so we killed it on vehicle expenses this year primarily because our water tender, water pump went out and had to be replaced. That was a, that, that took up almost our whole budget, um, in and of itself.
I don't have any questions.
Cool.
He came all the way for that.
Yeah.
Okay, no questions?
Nope, good.
You can take that.
Okay, I'll take that one.
Should have done it by Zoom, huh?
Well, so, um, I had to get out of the office today because I had to go in for an emergency this morning. I missed the meeting. And then my IT people in Battle Mountain, who Justin needs to have a talk to, destroyed my computer, so I had to leave before something horrible happened. Good to see you.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all we have on for today, unless you want to go through some of these miscellaneous items in the general fund.
I really have to go do corned beef and cabbage.
Yeah.
So you just want to check out tomorrow then at eight-thirty in the morning?
Eight-thirty.
Oh, that's okay. We'll just hustle through it tomorrow. We have law enforcement tomorrow.
And I don't know if you guys have looked.
I, I.
But.
I look at it.
He's increased his budget from this current year to next year by nine-hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
I saw that, and it's like, what the hell?
That's pretty simple, Shayla. Yeah, we thought.
He goes high and settles for it, so, so this is just a budget workshop, so when do we go back and find what's the budget?
Usually, we meet with him a couple of times, uh-huh.
And then I just take care of it. I make notes for going in and I have questions, Lacy, that's all. And then we just redo it to send the tenant to bed. But we do have to meet with the sheriff, sheriff several times.
Multiple times?
I personally am apologetic to you, because I wish in January, we would have sat down and said, and sent a memo up, raises for the two-and-a-half merit plus the, or the two percent merit, plus one and a half cost of living or salary.
Yeah, he, he doesn't even use, reinvents his salary figures to make it his own.
Yeah, and he gets very upset with me when I don't put in his suggestions. So I've put in his suggestions, and that's why he's one point four billion.
One of the problems is salary.
We have a contract, like, there's not really like he can't use his salary numbers, but he never does.
I did a rough back of the envelope the other day on what he estimates for this year's salaries to come in, the salaries and benefits versus what I show. It's three-hundred-twenty-seven thousand. And I took eighteen and a half payrolls divided by the year-to-date amount, multiplied it back out to include the twenty-six payrolls that are in the year. That's how I do every, my salary estimates.
So he does this every year so that he's hoping he'll just have more money in the bottom line.
Problem is, our revenues aren't growing.
Especially after last year and. And until we get something in here to, to start building revenues, it's not gonna happen. We need business as well.
I wish we had more money, but we don't.
And.
And we're finding that, not only in the sheriffs, but in the building fund, too. And we'll discuss that. We can't have that committee meeting last, if they do all the projects that are lined up for this year.
They can't, there won't, there isn't any money.
Next year is down to four hundred thousand. That fund has not gone below that level in the.
It should never go down that far. And that's when you wait, put some projects off.
And.
And.
And unfortunately, that's the decision that is gonna have to be made, because.
Yeah.
In the building, in the capital.
That's why that looks like that.
I didn't, we didn't budget anything for software.
No.
So the software annual fees, that's what I'm saying is gonna have to go back to add the law. Because that is at least a tax-based fund that collects property taxes every year. The building fund collects net proceeds if we get them. That's it.
Are we through with our, like, installation part of the conversion?
I believe so. I, I went through it and analyzed all that yesterday, but still, with the annual fees, it's like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Well, and then also, we've, we're looking at other annual fees, too. Dark, dark check.
We paid some big money on that car, car pal software for the DA's office. So that won't be a fee we have to pay again, but there's gotta be an annual fee to go along with it. I don't know what that is yet, because we haven't been on it long. So what, we paid ADS to what we're paying now is like a bunch of.
Well, when you go from one vendor to four or five vendors, it hurts in more ways than one.
It's very, very expensive compared to what ADS is.
Well, I did, I think that we should take into account the, the yearly subscriptions we're paid on.
And all we're receiving right now is we get about eighty-eight thousand for marijuana money that goes into this fund.
Just the building fund?
Yes, and then whatever net proceeds is, but some of this.
Like forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
So, so you're looking at like a hundred and thirty thousand that came in, and we're spending one point one billion.
That's crazy.
No, I wouldn't anticipate net proceeds being much higher.
No, no. No, because of all the construction and everything.
They're all day expansions, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have control over that.
And then if the state screws that up more, then we'll have that issue too.
And then we're just tilt money go.
Tilt money comes in and it transfers to the general fund and then the general fund transfers out. Cemetery.
Well, in the library, except you haven't had to send it to the library.
The library, I haven't transferred anything to them. Ag extension, we haven't transferred to recently.
A lot of it goes to law enforcement.
So we transfer to the general fund, the senior center, and the cemetery. But then what goes into the general fund?
Goes to law enforcement.
And history, the law, the law enforcement budget should be under the general fund just like all of our departments, but we moved it at the auditor's suggestion to its own because they always were, they were getting out the general fund balance. So we had more of a control for the separate.
And that was done probably fifteen, twenty years ago. Like that. When they do the audit, they classify law enforcement in the same area as the general fund, but it's specifically named.
They're really no different than like Rain's department or my department, but because they're the amount of their budget and prior overspending is separated. That's why she transfers money from the general fund to that.
And see, part of the problem too, Shayla, is to get all this to work out on paper. You know, it's an estimate. We estimate that we're gonna transfer one point five million dollars to law enforcement. But it's my responsibility to watch that on a monthly basis. And if he's got sufficient ending fund balance, then it's a financial decision not to transfer that money because it's. So even though it's on paper, we thought we were gonna have to transfer it. We don't have to. But then again, I can't let him go in the negative either.
Sure. How often is, how, how often is he over budgeted?
Um, he, he hasn't been lately, the last.
Over budgeted, it's just that we always cut his budget in the beginning.
Oh. But he hasn't been over in the last few years because Rain watches it very closely. But there have been years in the past, and I don't know about Jerry, but there was other sheriffs that were over. And I, I don't remember.
Jerry actually watches his budget pretty close.
But you know, the more you give him, the more he's gonna spend and we don't have the money. So.
And, and if burning man happens, when, when, what happens with that? Does it?
Well, they pay their set amount based on.
And then he has, and he has a budget based on.
On whose count of attendance?
Oh, that's a whole nother.
Whose count of attendance?
Yeah. They do. And but BLM has gotten involved in it too because they don't feel the count has been right. So last, last time, not last year, but the last time, they were there too, but, and they had to actually watch it. But they have so many, this is the issue. They have so many volunteers that go and work or just are there, and I can't remember. I'm saying ten thousand off the top of my head. And those are not paid participants.
But there's still people on the player.
Yes, but according to the agreement, it has to be the paid participants. And that's something that I didn't understand way back when because it was like my first year. But anyway. Yeah. Wow. But that'll be, that'll be up for negotiations here in another two years, I think.
I'm not so sure that they haven't filed with that agreement now, so.
Well, I think they violated the law.
Time over the yearly?
So we're at the point of doing a new agreement if they continue to, I should say, if they continue to want to be there.
Well, they have so many years that they cannot be there and come back. I think it's four.
And it's been a year agreement, right?
It's what?
How many year agreement? Fifty years?
No, the agreement itself is for, was for ten years. But the exemption from our permitting, our festival ordinance was for fifty years and that was a whole big mess. But they will have, we will be negotiating a new agreement with them. And. Anyway. Well, we're gonna demand more money.
If you can't have a festival ordinance, money, festival money, there's gotta be something you can call it.
I think there are several things.
And Bryce is stronger about that than at the time, so. Bryce was not our DA then. So can we go home, please?
That's fine.
I'm gonna be shifting this down. But we. Our workshop. Can you do it?
We're just gonna resume. That's right.
Thank you, Shayla.